Don Industrial filed by Charlotte Catamaro with Capital Region Water. It's to construct an industrial building and associated site and access improvements. The applicant has requested that the application be withdrawn. Okay, we don't have to vote on it.
No, no vote.
Under new business, first item is special exception application for 2017 North Sixth Street. It's Don Commercial General, it's filed by Robbie Singh, hope I got that right, with 2017 North Sixth Street LLC. This is to request relief from the off-street parking requirements associated with the redevelopment of the site and expansion of the convenience store component of the site.
Yes, so the applicant is requesting relief from the off-street parking requirements associated with the redevelopment of the site and expansion of the convenience store component of the site. Per Section 7-327.6 of the zoning code, the new structure would require 58 off-street parking spaces, whereas the applicant will only be providing 31 spaces on-site. Property at 2017 North Sixth Street is a .52 acre lot featuring a one-story 1,884 square foot structure, which was constructed in 1965. Property is bounded by McClay Street to the north, Wallace Street to the east, the property at 2015 North Sixth Street to the south, and North Sixth Street to the west. This detached structure features elements of vernacular commercial architectural style. Character-defining features include the brick facade of the primary structure, the former garage bays on the front elevation infilled with siding doors and windows, a building addition on the side elevation topped with a metal railing, the standing seam metal roof with ice stops, and the cupola with louvered vents. The main entrance features full-view metal double doors flanked by side lights and topped with a roll-down security gate. There's a secondary entrance on the side elevation which features a solid metal door with a kick plate. Administration also includes windows of varying sizes and configurations. The front elevation features large storefront windows. The structure is topped with a standing seam metal roof featuring ice stops and topped with an ornamental cupola featuring louvers and a finial. A large canopy sheltering four gas-pumping islands projects from the building across the width of the site, much of which is paid for vehicular access and parking, although there are pockets of minimal landscaping on the street front edges and a large freestanding sign in the corner near the intersection. Eastern third of the site is a gravel lot with overgrown vegetation surrounded by a chain-link fence topped with barbed wire. The building and accessory structures have little in the way of aesthetic value and the property differs significantly from the blocks to the north. As such, the property does not contribute to the architectural character of the streetscape. The Planning Bureau staff recommends the request be approved with the following conditions: The applicant should consider removing the westernmost proposed curb cut on the McClay Street frontage of the property, given its proximity to the intersection and potential to create confusing and dangerous traffic circulation for both drivers and pedestrians. With traffic anticipated to increase upon completion of the building directly to the north, pedestrian volumes will likely increase at the intersection as well. The applicant must coordinate with Capital Region Water regarding the site disturbance and proposed development footprint to ascertain what stormwater mitigation effects may be necessary, efforts may be necessary. The applicant should consider installing low-plants screenings in the setback areas around the perimeter of the site to improve the aesthetics of the property and/or incorporate stormwater management infrastructure if possible. The applicant must ensure the dumpster enclosure is designed and built in conformance with the regulations in Section 7-33112 of the zoning code. And finally, the applicant must ensure that signage for the redeveloped site is brought into conformance with the zoning code and that current non-conforming signage such as feather flag signs and electronically changing signage is removed and not reinstalled. Planning Bureau staff recommends the request be approved for the following reasons: Proposed development will place an outdated makeshift structure and overgrown undeveloped lot with a blinding influence on the streetscape with a modern convenience store building that will enhance retail options for surrounding residents and workers. Because the use is already operating on-site, approval of the proposal will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood and will provide benefits such as temporary construction jobs, aesthetic improvements, and improved traffic circulation. And finally, the project will result in the removal of one unnecessary curb cut along North Sixth Street, and if the Bureau's conditions are adopted, a second curb cut along McClay Street, clarifying vehicular access to the site, removing vehicular pedestrian conflict points, and making access and circulation safer for all road users.
Thank you, Jeff. Could you state your names, address, sorry, your name, relationship to the project, and your address?
Yes, I am Jacob Domann, attorney with Stevens and Lee in the Harrisburg office here, the attorney representing the applicant. And with me-
My name's Sean Hawes, I'm the civil engineer for the project, I'm Langen Engineering, I'm a senior project manager with the firm.
Okay. You gentlemen heard the staff report with the conditions. Are you acceptable of those conditions?
I believe we are. I mean, I would like to talk to our client, so we apologize that the applicant wasn't able to be here tonight about the restrictions for the northwest corner off of McClay, but I think that's, that's a condition that we can work through with dead-end parking or something similar on that corner.
Okay.
And the rest of them, I believe, are, were willing to comply with.
Okay. Commissioners, I have no questions at this time, so if you have any concerns or questions, I'll start with Commissioner Mackenzie.
No questions, I think this project's pretty straightforward. It's a reconstruction of a very tired, similar function predating the zoning code, so.
Commissioner Oldt.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Mackenzie, it's straightforward and it's refreshing what's already there, so yeah, I'm in favor.
Commissioner Reed.
Just clarification question, there's no increase in the number of fueling stations?
No, so we won't be changing that at all, there will be a modification to the canopy. Right now, where we're proposing the drive aisle on the southern boundary, or in the southern side of our plan, there's a, you know, a pole that supports the canopy, so we'll do a structural analysis of what's, what's out there now so that we could remove that, propose better circulation, but the fueling stations will stay the same.
Okay. That's-
Commissioner Reed.
No issues with the application of special exception. I have a question, maybe this would be for the Planning Bureau, wouldn't this, would this need a land development plan? Right?
Well, we wouldn't because there's no change in impervious surface.
Are you sure?
Yes, because the gravel area where the proposed building is, like, we consider compacted gravel to be impervious surface, unless gravel is specifically designed to handle stormwater management. We have not required a land development plan for, like, a change in a footprint of a building like this, especially if there's no increase in impervious surface.
So why do we do land development plans for residential conversions?
I would say-
Oftentimes, we see an existing building footprint with no external changes, but they still have to submit a land development plan.
I think that's-
And this one has a complete rebuild of a building and a restructuring redesign of a parking lot.
That's a good question, actually. That was more of something that we've kind of continued from before when I worked here to when I started. It was, that was the standard by which we determined land development plans, so I just maintain that going forward. I don't disagree with you that maybe the threshold for what should be a land development plan, especially with conversion of properties, might be a little different, but that's the regulations and the standards we had when I began here, so I just continue doing it.
Interesting. Okay. Yeah, I would, I would look at site changes, right, to predicate a need of a, use of a land development plan being needed, so, but we go with what's currently written in our city codes, so, understood, thank you.
But isn't the disturbance area going to push them into soil conservation?
Jeff's saying no because it's already, the entire site's already fully impervious and there, so that's not changing.
They may still have to go to DCCD because they'll have to dig up the property, but the before and after essentially of what is impervious won't change from the regulatory standpoint, but the actual action of getting in there and digging it up is what will cause the DCCD review.
Yeah, so they'll get a finger on it.
Yeah.
Commissioner Jordan.
Yes, another question for Planning Bureau. I think there's two different references to it in here, basically saying that the convenience store should require, in this particular case, 58 spaces, but we're allowing 31 just due to the transient nature of business. Is that something that maybe should be looked at in the future so that maybe it won't require a special exception in the future for this particular type of property?
Absolutely, and you know, I thought about that as I was going through, where I was just like, yeah, it's kind of, I was kind of, you know, there, I think there's justification in that there's, you know, on-street parking in surrounding blocks, especially on Sixth Street to the south, and there's bus routes that go through, but when I'm, when I was thinking about this and I was like, well, who's going to take a bus to the site anyway as a, as a justification, I mean, and yeah, I think it certainly seems to be a pretty excessive amount of parking to provide for, again, such a transient use.
Yeah, like if maybe the threshold for the convenience store with the gas should just be lower so that there's maybe not so many things that are meaning a special exemption.
Correct, correct.
Due to the, you know, come-and-go nature.
Yeah, I definitely think, you know, something, I, I don't know what a correct one would be, we'd probably have to look at some other more modern ones, maybe in the surrounding municipalities or elsewhere in the state here to see what they're using, but yeah, you're not going to have 58 cars on, on the property at one time, so.
And the only other question I had is for the first recommendation. I'm not familiar with this, I'll just ask, is, is, when it comes to the curb cuts, is that something that we can require, or is that just something that we can just recommend?
So I would say that this is a recommendation. I would, I believe that applicants have a possibly legal right to maintain the same amount of curb cuts. We certainly appreciate them getting rid of one, and I would say that probably from a traffic engineering perspective, you would not have them this close to the intersection just because I could see somebody pulling out as, like, cars were going through, but it's an artifact of, you know, an older design when you didn't have those standards and you have those legal rights to maintain that, so I would consider this to be more of a condition and, or sorry, a recommendation than a requirement.
And that's due to it already existing?
Correct.
Okay, all right, that's all the questions I have, thank you.
I'm just going to ask this solicitor, she had any concerns with what Commissioner Jordan said?
No, and I actually was just looking up some of the definitions, and, I mean, I'll keep my comments to myself about how the zoning code could be updated, but at this time, no.
Right.
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 I noticed you sort of-
I was looking up definitions because of Commissioner Merrick's question, I was like, oh, that was a good question to me, so.
I was the one who was on the board and never did have to take a test at that.
Well, I just, all the laws have to keep up with the times, you know, so with technology and all kinds of different things, there needs to be some move for movement, and I, you know, some of the uniqueness of these projects does bring up some of the little flaws that are becoming more apparent, so we will utilize you guys and ensure new suggestions when it's time to update.
That's 11 years, right?
Yeah. Commissioner Vincent.
Yeah, my, my only question is that, well, what, are there any studies or anything you use for citing market standards?
In terms of retail floor area?
In terms of references, in terms of, to say, and here it says, based on market standards, and then, beliefs, so I'm not sure, is there research behind that, or is there-
For the parking, I mean, I, I think it's, for this one, it's somewhat based on our experience with other convenience store developments in areas within city limits and outside of city limits. We've worked on, you know, other convenience stores with a bigger footprint, and they have-
So your companies have personal history of this state?
Yeah, and while this is not a specific end user at this time, in terms of like a bigger name or anything like that, 31 seems to, you know, kind of comply with what this site has, whereas we're looking at bigger units that might be in the 40s, the low 40s. This one's a little bit smaller, it's within city limits, and then, you know, based on the feedback from, from the engineer, you know, there's streets with potential parking there as well, and other means of accessing the site other than car traffic. I think 31 kind of, kind of makes sense for this site specifically.
With that, I'll go to the public. Is there anyone for or against this project? And I'll start with the middle section. And I go to my right, appears there's no one who has questions on it. So commissioners, as most of you said, this is straightforward, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve of conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval of this project with the conditions. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Motion carried. Good luck.
All right, thank you all for your time.
Okay, this is item number two. This is a variance in special application application for 1332 North Second Street and 122 Calder Street. This is residential medium density filed by Adam Brenneman, Brenneman Properties LLC. It's to expand the existing non-conforming multifamily dwelling use on-site by adding eight new units to the existing five units on-site by converting space occupied by the former funeral home. The applicant also seeks to utilize existing surface parking lots on the properties as a parking lot or structure commercial use. Seth?
Yeah, so the applicant is proposing to expand the existing non-conforming multifamily dwelling use by adding eight new units to the existing five units on-site by converting first-floor space occupi-, formerly occupied by a funeral home, which requires zoning hearing board approval of a special exception per Section 7-321.4B. The applicant also seeks to utilize existing surface parking lots on the property as a parking lot or structure commercial use, which requires zoning hearing board approval of a variance application per Section 7-305.7 of the zoning code. And the planning commissioners may remember that this was brought up a few months ago, and it was denied by the zoning hearing board, and that was for, but that was just for singular use of the accessory parking lot at 1332 North Second Street as a commercial parking lot. And so this proposal envisions it being almost a secondary aspect to the expansion of the existing multifamily dwelling in the building on-site. The property at 1332 North Second Street is a .48 acre lot featuring a three-story structure resulting from the combination of three separate buildings into a mixed-use building, a funeral home and apartments, with a total area of 8,428 square feet which were constructed circa 1900, and a separate storage garage of 2,020 square feet which was constructed in 1957. Property is bounded by Calder Street to the north, North Second Street to the east, Seaford Street to the south, and the property at 124 Seaford Street, Seaford Street and a small grocery's alley to the west. This semi-detached structure features elements of an indeterminate architectural style. Character-defining features include the formed stone facade and water table, the multiple access points sheltered by awnings around the building, the regular fenestration pattern, the upper-floor decks on the rear elevation and roof, and the freestanding signs near the parking lot and building entrances. There are multiple entrances throughout the building, although the main entrance on the eastern elevation features panel double doors and a full, and a full-view door set in simple frames, which are sheltered by a large awning with square posts and an arch section. Other entrances on the front and side elevations feature the same windows, same types of doors and similar awnings. Administration on the front elevation features two-over-two windows set in simple formed stone surrounds with soldier course headers and sills wrapped in aluminum. Administration on the side elevation is more irregular and features two-over-two, one-over-one and plate glass windows. Structure is primarily topped with flat rubber roofs. The other major feature of the site is a sizable surface parking lot occupying the southern half of the property, which is bordered by planting beds with trees along the eastern frontage with Second Street, and a four-foot-high chain-link fence along the center, southern frontage with Seaford Street. Though the architectural style differs somewhat from other nearby buildings, specifically with respect to the formed stone and awnings, and the large parking lot distinguishes the property from others in the historic district, the building height, massing, and location along lot lines does generally reflect the environment of the surrounding community. As such, the sub, the subject property minimally contributes to the architectural character of the neighborhood. The property at 122 Calder Street is a .09 acre surface parking lot with curb, with curb stops for 11 spaces on-site. The only access is via metal gate accessed from Calder Street and access is otherwise prohibited by metal bollards. Property is bounded by narrow rights-of-way to the north and east, Calder Street to the south, and Lawton Street to the west. The Planning Bureau staff recommends the request be approved for the following reasons, or with the following conditions: If granted zoning approval to move forward with the project as proposed, the applicant must submit a land development plan for the establishment of 13 residential units on-site. Any exterior alterations to the property must be submitted for review by the city's historic preservation specialists and may require a hard approval of a certificate of appropriateness application. The applicant must remove the bollards from the sidewalk along the Lawton Street frontage of 122 Calder Street and reconstruct the sidewalk at that location to allow safe pedestrian passage. Finally, the Planning Bureau recommends the applicant identify a method of controlling access to the lots, either through automated keyed entry gates or through on-site management of the lots, to prevent unauthorized access and ensure spaces are available for the principal users of the lots, the residents of the multifamily dwelling. Planning Bureau staff recommends the request be approved for the following reasons: The proposed expansion of the multifamily dwelling use from five to 13 units represents a reasonable proposal for reuse of the former funeral home on the first floor, is likely to have less impacts than other potential uses for the space such as a convenience store or restaurant, and will provide new housing units to address the need evident in the city generally and the neighborhood specifically. With respect to the proposed parking lot or structure commercial aspect of the proposal, the Planning Bureau notes that does not require zoning relief for any proposed development or use, but rather who will be using the existing parking spaces, and thus represents a de-minimist deviation from the zoning regulations, which meets the applicable criteria in the zoning code. While surface parking lots are generally not advisable from a planning perspective as they represent an underutilization of valuable urban land and create impacts such as stormwater runoff and urban heat island effect, in this instance, it is reasonable to maximize the utility of spaces in an existing lot by leasing parking to local residents. And finally, reuse of the property to accommodate parking demand created by residents and businesses of the surrounding neighborhood can provide benefits by reducing on-street parking near intersections and crosswalks and on vacant lots, can provide secured parking for those residents wishing to sign leases, and can be designed to incorporate elements such as landscape screening that improve the aesthetics of the property.
Thank you, Jeff. Could you state your names, address, and relationship to the project?
Yes, excuse me, Phil Petrina, McNeese Wallace and Eric, 100 Pine Street, Harrisburg, attorney for the applicant Brenneman Properties LLC.
Michael White, Midtown Property Management, 1419 North Third. I'm authorized representative and agent for the owner, Adam Brenneman.
Okay. You both heard the staff report, are you acceptable of the conditions?
Yes, we generally concur with Mr. Knight's report. That was very thorough and I, I believe covered the, you know, the application well. We did have a presentation prepared tonight, but understanding that you guys have quite the agenda this evening, so I won't belabor the point of Jeff's report. We're in agreement with the conditions and the general characterizations of this project from the Bureau of Planning report and as stated in our zoning application.
Okay. One of the areas I always talk about is parking, but it seems you guys have did a lot of parking spaces available.
Yeah, this one, and I think Jeff sort of got to this, and as we stated in our application, this is a unique situation where you have a former funeral home in, you know, in the middle of Midtown on Second Street that has sort of declined in usage over the years, and attached to that funeral home is a very large parking lot, with a secondary parking lot just across Calder Street from it, with total access to 46 off-street parking spaces. So you have an unusually large paved, pre-existing parking lot in the city, which is, is a rarity, as you guys know, down here, and for the intensity of the use for multifamily, it only requires 16 parking spaces, so you're left with this still cumbersome large parking lot that the applicant has to figure out what to do with, which was, you know, the, the calculus behind the variance request to be able to lease those parking spaces in our district to neighboring property owners, you know, businesses in the, in the neighborhood, and other residents of the neighborhood who may be in need of a parking space.
Thanks. As I said, you're sort of different than most people, most don't have enough parking.
Yeah, we have the opposite problem here for a change, which, yeah, is an interesting one.
Which is a good, good problem I have.
Yeah.
Commissioners, that's my only question so far, so I'll go to you with your questions and concerns, start with Commissioner Mackenzie.
No, I think this is kind of a unique one in that the, the damage is done in terms of demolition for the surface lots long before current zoning or really. Jeff, I just want to reconfirm, I, I think I know the answer, but we're outside the no-compete area.
Correct, it actually runs down the center of Second Street, yep.
Okay, so that's, that's an important issue, you know, we've been talking about, so. I have, I've got no other questions, I guess, what's, what's the use of the lot been right now?
It's basically vacant. The funeral home uses it on, you know, the occasion that they have a funeral-
Are they still functioning within the building, or they will stop at the end of this?
They, so we entered into an agreement of sale, and at this point in time, they're not conducting any funerals there. Our understanding in conversations with the owner, the current owner of the property, is that the, the reason for them closing that location is they were only having maybe two funerals every couple of months there at that location, so they just didn't really have a need for it. Most of the funerals that they're doing are out in Susquehanna Town, on Lindles Town Road, and so they made the decision to just close this location and put it up for sale, at, at which point our client entered into an agreement to purchase it.
Was this Bittner has it most recently?
Yes, yep. And it's been, it's been there since at least the 1950s, I think probably even longer, it was a funeral home, but for whatever reason, folks are, are using funeral homes outside the city.
Right, when it opened, we had 90,000 residents in the city too.
Sure, yeah, sure, yeah.
Very different there. I have no other questions.
Okay, Commissioner Oldt.
Jeffrey, to the best you can, what was the zoning hearing board's rationale?
I think, I didn't read through all of their, their decision, but I believe it was basically related to there could be a future use for the building that necessitated the use of some of the parking on the space, so they didn't think that it met the justification for a variance where the full use of that surface parking lot would be just as a commercial parking lot, because I think they felt that there was an opportunity for reuse of the building as the applicants are proposing, and therefore a need to use some of that parking, and without knowing what that reuse would be, they didn't know how much of the parking would be necessary.
All right. And of course, one of the issues that comes up when we look at something like this is the, the density, obviously you don't have a problem with the-
They're actually in conformance with the regulations, they could have up to 14 units by right, due to the relatively large size of that, of this parcel, and that's not including 122 Calder Street either, so the 13 units is in conformance.
All right, yeah, nothing beyond that.
I have no questions.
Commissioner Merrick.
Nope, no, no other questions from me.
Commissioner Jordan.
One question for you, Jeffrey, similar to the last case, with the landscape screening, is there a reason that it is a recommendation and not a requirement for the lots?
I mean, because the lots are as they are right now, and I'm also not quite sure, without having a full layout of what the parking lot's going to look like, whether they have space to be able to install that around the periphery of the site, they might need all of that to fit in the number of spaces that they're proposing, so the applicant did, I think, indicate a willingness to bring the property into conformance by putting in landscape screening, but I would presume that would be dependent upon what the design of the parking lot would look like.
Okay, that makes sense. Beyond that, sounds like a smart use of the parking, it's benefit to the owner and obviously the community around it, so that's it, thank you.
Commissioner Vincent.
Yeah, no question, sounds pretty straightforward, extra housing, adequate parking.
Okay, I'll go to the public, therefore against this project, please state, stand and state your name and address, I'll start in the middle, and go to my right, so commissioners, as we all said, this is pretty straightforward, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve with conditions.
Is there a second?
No, second.
It's been moved in second for approval with the conditions. All in favor, state by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, motion carried, good luck.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Item number three, this is a special exception application for 1100 North 17th Street. It's on residential medium density filed by, you're going to have to help me with your name there, Mohom-
Mohwakidi.
Mohom, I don't know what you said. It's to establish a place of worship use at the subject pri- It's to establish a place of worship use at the subject property.
Yes, so the applicant is proposing to establish a place of worship use at the subject property, which requires zoning hearing board approval of a special exception for the proposed use per section seven dash three oh five point seven of the zoning code. Property at 1100 North Seventeenth Street is a point zero nine acre lot featuring a two-story fifty-six hundred and forty-six square foot structure, which was constructed in nineteen eighty-eight. Property is bounded by 1102 and 1106 North Seventeenth Street to the north. The property is at 1102 and 1104 North Seventeenth Street and North Seventeenth Street to the east, Hur Street to the south, and Shot Street to the west. The semi-detached structure features elements of an eclectic mid-century architectural style. Character-defining features include the L-shaped building layout, the varied facade treatments including brick, CMU block, and wood siding, the diverse window designs, and the full-story building, and the full-story building projection with cedar shingles and inverted dormers on the side elevation. The main entrance on the North Seventeenth Street features a half-view metal door sheltered by a round canvas awning. It is accessed by a narrow concrete pathway. There is a secondary entrance onto the Hur Street sidewalk featuring full-view metal double doors. There are three entrances on the rear elevation that feature half-view metal doors. Administration includes windows of varying sizes and configurations. The first floor of the front elevation features two storefront windows and wooden infill panels of the other storefront windows with circular cutouts, a configuration that extends around to the side elevation, although they have been covered with plywood. Otherwise, windows on the second floors and the rear elevation are generally plate glass windows with some featuring hopper windows. Majority of the structure is topped with a flat rubber roof, while the northern building extension along Shot Street features a simple hipped roof clad in asphalt shingles. Property otherwise features a small grass lawn along the frontage with North Seventeenth Street. Structure differs significantly in both age and architecture from the surrounding built environment and has been significantly altered over the years. Thus, it does not contribute to the historic and architectural character of the neighborhood. In addition to the principal property, the request also involves the associated properties under the same ownership at sixteen sixteen Hur Street and sixteen twenty-five Cumberland Street, where the applicant intends on providing the required off-street parking. These properties are generally asphalt surface parking lots striped with parking spaces. The former consists of two rows of lined parking, including two ADA spaces enclosed by a six-foot-high aluminum fence and a small CMU black block garage with three bays featuring rolled-down security gates. And the latter features a row of lined parking and half of a grass lawn enclosed by a six-foot-high chain link fence. The planning bureau staff recommends the request be approved with the following conditions. The applicant must submit a detailed site plan developed by a professional for the accessory parking lot at sixteen sixteen Hur Street, showing the installation of required landscaping along the western frontage and new landscaping along the southern frontage, and parking spaces configured in conformance with the applicable regulations in section seven dash three twenty-seven point eight of the zoning code. And that's because the two rows of parking, you see, the newest lined row of parking does not permit access into that second row. That's kind of like what would be called a valet parking in our zoning code, so we'd need to see how that's relined. The applicants do have sufficient off-street parking if that new row of parking is removed regardless. And then the new wall signage as proposed by the applicant will be limited to four square feet. They noted that might, would be six square feet, and must otherwise be in conformance with the applicable zoning regulations, or a separate zoning relief application will need to be approved by the zoning hearing board. Planning bureau staff recommends the request be approved for the following reasons. A property has experienced an extended period of vacancy of seven years and previously accommodated a different non-conforming use, a child care center on site. As such, there is support for the allowance of a non-conforming use that the building can be actively occupied. The project, the project uses fairly low intensity, which should be compatible with the surrounding residential neighborhood and should not increase, should not create adverse impacts for residents. And the final one's supposed to say the applicant has committed to building and site improvements that should improve the aesthetics of the property.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Could you, gentlemen, state your name, address, and relationship to the project?
My name is Abdul Julian Larry. My address is nine eleven North Eighteenth Street. I'm the manager of the community in terms of getting the property, so that's my position.
Yeah, I'm one of the member of the community as well.
Okay. Still state your name and address.
Yeah, my name is Amadou Aminu. My address is forty-one twenty-three Font Drive.
Okay. And gentleman behind you, is he with you?
Yeah.
Just state your name and address.
My name is Duzar Muhammad, and I'm eleven twenty-five fifty Lexington Street. I'm the assistant and also treasurer of the community.
You gentlemen heard the staff report. They had two conditions. Are you acceptable of those two conditions?
Yeah.
Okay. Jeff, this is more for you. I think you said in the report that they had the right amount of parking spaces, was about nineteen, is that what you said?
They have about twenty, and then the new five that they put in, and that was the twenty-five that they have in their application, but like I said, I don't, the new ones were put in, you know, and basically made the back ones inaccessible if you were to use these. So we'd just like to see a site plan for that property, which, you know, lays out exactly how legal spaces and drive aisles will be installed so that all the spaces will be accessible if parked.
Okay. My concern is they said they could get up to fifty people. Where are they going to go?
So the off-street parking requirements for a place of worship use are one space for four seats, and the applicants didn't indicate how many seats they would have, but they did say they'd have twenty to fifty individuals on a weekly basis for services and up to seventy-five for special events. So I use that as a proxy for the number of seats they would have and therefore what their off-street parking requirements would be. And as noted, between the two lots at sixteen sixteen Hur Street and sixteen twenty-five Cumberland Street, they do have the required amount of off-street parking.
I just don't know where the overflow is going to go. And I don't want them to park on Hur Street, you know.
Well, there is no parking, oh, there's parking across the street on Hur Street, but there's no parking on their side of Hur Street.
Okay. Okay, with that, I ask my commissioners if they have any questions or concerns. Commissioner Mackenzie.
No, no specific questions or concerns, I think, just to note that the, it would be a difficult property to convert to other, but it does seem to be appropriate, given the interior configuration for what's being proposed, you know, it's a good building for remake, so, you know, wish them well.
Commissioner O'Toole.
The only question I have is for Jeffrey. Jeffrey, was, was this property before us, within the last two years maybe?
You, probably, I think it was in twenty twenty-two, they were proposing, I don't know if this was these gentlemen, but they were proposing a convenience store on site, but I believe that got denied. I don't know, that was being managed by our former deputy planning director, so I don't know whether that was denied at the planning commission or zoning hearing board stage.
No, it just looked familiar and I just want, I'm just curious, so. Yeah, I, I'm in favor of it.
Well, just to add to that, I remember that one now. A lot of neighbors didn't want that convenience. It came out, you know. So it might be trouble and so forth, you know. Okay, Commissioner Reed.
I have no questions.
Commissioner Merrick.
No, I don't think I have any questions, and I agree that this type of use, you know, makes sense for, for this building space and what was there previously, so.
Thank you, Lynn. Commissioner Jordan.
Question for you, Jeffrey. It said in their application they had referenced possibly installing a bike rack. I guess I was curious why that wasn't a condition.
I guess I didn't have it in there as a condition. I think I wrote it in there in the parking area where I, or in the section relative to parking, where I made a recommendation that it be located near the main entrance on Seventeenth Street and potentially sheltered if possible. I don't know what kind of exterior alterations the applicants are planning to do, but I think there's a possibility they remove the existing awning that's over the main entrance, and if so, they could install a wide enough awning to shelter any bike racks that could be installed there.
Okay. And this is just more of a general question in that same vein. So when it comes to bike parking, if it's, if it's a recommendation, is it always a recommendation or can it be a requirement?
So we do have a, the zoning code does require bike parking if it's, if a proposed use has ten or more required spaces. It doesn't really kind of give any more information beyond that, like say what kind of design the bike racks will be or even how many there will be, so I would say that's probably yet another deficiency in the zoning code. But, you know, as a general rule, we recommend using the kind of bike pack, bikes, bike racks that are out in front of the Mad Moose Tavern, I don't know if you're familiar with those, or just like a single post with a circle. They don't take up a lot of space and they can be attached to on both sides, so they tend to be a pretty useful model to use.
Okay. So, so basically, when, when a bike rack install is required, then beyond that it's optional, how it's, how and where and what type?
Correct. I mean, sometimes in some cases, we do make recommendations of where it should be, like usually we recommend they be close to a main entrance, so it's not like around the back of a building, and again, sheltered if possible. So, and usually I have that in here as a condition of approval. I think I just maybe slipped my mind as I was writing these.
But, but even the positioning is still just a recommendation?
Correct, yep.
Understood. Nothing else for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vincent.
No questions. Seems pretty straightforward.
Okay. I'll go to the public. If anyone's for or against this project, again, stand and state your name and address. I'll start with the middle, and no one's to my right and no one to my left, so they left. So commissioners, again, can I get a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second for approval with the conditions. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reed. This is a variance and special exception application for sixteen oh five sixteen to, through sixteen thirteen Market Street. Again, it's the zone RM, it's filed by Chris Franklin, which handles Happening Hand Foundation and is to request relief from the regulation regarding lot width and to request relief from the off-street parking requirements.
Mr. Chair, I'm, the applicant's a client of mine, so I'll be recusing myself in this application.
You're honest man.
That's it? For once.
For once.
So this, this application, this application and the next are related. This is one of the zoning relief land development combos. The next one will be as well. So I can, you know, read, I don't know if you guys want to do the discussion for both, or I could do one at a time because the conditions are a little bit different. I usually apply most of the physical conditions to the land development plan aspect. Up to, up to you guys on how you want to move forward, but I can begin the case review and you guys can decide from there then. So the applicant is proposing to construct four attached single-family townhomes along with associated site improvements. This project will require consolidation and re-subdivision of the existing five lots at sixteen oh five and sixteen thirteen Market Street into four lots. Given the space constraints, two of those lots, lots number two and three, will only be sixteen feet wide because section seven dash three oh seven point three of the zoning code requires lots in the residential medium-density district to have a minimum width of twenty feet. This aspect of the project will require a variance approval from the zoning hearing board. Additionally, the applicant is also requesting approval of a special exception for relief from the requirement to provide off-street parking. The project site is comprised of five vacant parcels totaling point one five acres, owned by the Harrisburg redevelopment authority, which previously accommodated a small community garden with raised planter beds, although now features a deteriorating vinyl fence along the front property line, rutted ground that has been used for vehicular storage, debris from the former community space, general accumulation of litter, and some mature trees along the southern property line. The project site is bounded by Market Street to the north, the property at sixteen fifteen Market Street to the east, a narrow grocery alley to the south, and the property at sixteen oh three Market Street to the west. The planning bureau staff recommends the request be approved with the following conditions. The applicant will receive approval of the law consolidation subdivision and land development plan submitted, submitted concurrently with his zoning relief application and any departmental recommendations under conditions of approval applied to that review. The applicant should consider fencing in all or portions of the rear yards or consider installing fences and gates along the sides of the end units to give residents more privacy and security. The planning bureau staff recommends that the request be approved for the following reasons. The applicant has demonstrated that they have met the burden for granting both zoning relief requests, they have provided a lease for five spaces at a nearby surface parking lot if necessary, and the requested variance is a minor deviation that obviates more intensive zoning relief regarding setback encroachment and landscape screening, while providing secondary egress from the rear yards in the event of an emergency. The massing, siting, and design of the proposed row homes will reflect the character of the, yeah, reflect the character of the surrounding neighborhood, providing compatible infill development along a primary corridor through the Allison Hill neighborhood. Specifically, the planning bureau notes the inclusion of front porches and Oriole windows on the second floor matches many of the other row homes on the block and is a significant improvement over other designs featuring flat facades. The project will improve currently vacant and overgrown lots with affordable units that are a pressing need in the neighborhood, specifically in the city generally. And the project advances the purpose of the RM zoning district provided in chapter seven dash three oh five point four C of the zoning code, as it provides a development at medium densities that will not adversely affect the stability of the area and advances chapter seven dash three oh one point two seven of the zoning code by protecting the residential neighborhood and providing diverse housing opportunities.
Thank you, Jeff. Could you state your name, address, and relationship to the project?
Sure. My name's Zane Geist, with Integrated Consulting, the design consultant for the applicant, and we are located at four thirty North Front Street in Warham Leesburg.
Okay. You heard the staff report. Are you acceptable of those conditions?
Yes.
Okay. Did you want to add anything, or is...
None other than the fact this, this was, this property was before you, back in April, I believe, as a multifamily proposal at that time. Since then, obviously, there's been some changes in, in terms of what they think is constructable within their, their budget for the project here, but ultimately, I, I think that this approach actually fits the character of that neighborhood a little bit better with what's proposed now. And, you know, they're committed to making a, a nice project out of a vacant lot here, so I appreciate the opportunity to be back in front of you to present a alternative approach to, to this property. And I do have a rendering on the back here to kind of give you an idea. I think it was in your packet, but. Which, you know, back and forth with Jeffrey and with the applicant, we, we believe we've come up with something that provides a little more exterior detail as a fit in with the, with the neighborhood than what was previously proposed as well. That's it.
Commissioners, I have no questions at this time. I think it's definitely a better project than it was before, so appreciate that. So I'll go to my commissioners and with their questions in return. Commissioner Mackenzie?
No questions. I think there, there's definitely an attempt here to be, you know, reflective of the community, knowing that you're dealing with a budget and we know the finances of that, and hopefully if it, if it gets built, it'll provide a value in that area.
All right. Thanks for letting me know I'll call on you. Commissioner Reed.
Will these be rental townhomes, or will they be for sale?
I believe they are for, I don't know if that's known at this time. I have to check with the, yeah, applicant. Obviously, what's that?
You're doing a reverse subdivision of the parcels?
Yes, yeah, so I think there's supposed to be fee simple at this point versus the multifamily that was rental, but that could, could, you know, it depends at the time which this actually goes through, you know.
Okay.
Commissioner Merrick.
I don't think I have any questions. I appreciate seeing an infill project and, you know, this, this type of housing, we don't have a lot of new, so seeing single-family townhomes is also a plus, so.
Commissioner Jordan.
No questions at this time.
Commissioner Vincent.
No questions. Clever use of the rock church for extra parking if needed, so.
Okay. I'll go to the public. I'll start in the middle.
As a public participant here, I did, I just like to answer Jamie's question, they are for sale at the first-time homeowners.
Yeah.
I'll go to the middle if you're for or against this project. Again, stand and state your name and address, because no one to my left, to my right, to my left. Okay, commissioners, can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve with, do we have any conditions in there?
Yeah.
There were two conditions, okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval of the project with the two conditions. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? One abstaining. Motion carried. Good luck. Oh, we'll go to the next one. Just for the record, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll just do it for the...
Okay.
Yeah, there are different conditions.
So, this aspect of the project is the land development component, and the applicant is proposing to consolidate and re-subdivide the various lots comprising the project site into four separate parcels on which four attached row homes will be constructed, along with associated site improvements. Each row home will have four bedrooms and two and a half baths, and feature front porches and second-floor Oriole windows which reflect the architecture of the surrounding blocks. Project site is the same, and the planning bureau staff recommends the request be approved with the following conditions. The applicant is required to receive a certificate of qualification pursuant to chapter twelve dash one oh one of title twelve, the Affordable Housing Certification, prior to recording the law consolidation and land development plan with the Dolphin County Recorder of Deeds. If possible, the applicant should consider building designs with a zero-step entrance threshold or other accommodation to ensure visibility of the structures, allowing ADA access for residents and visitors. The applicant should consider different divisions along the front porches than the proposed fence panels, such as railing similar to those of the, to those along the front porches of the porches, for portions of the porches, which will contrast with the architecture of the front facades. And the applicant should consider fencing in all or portions of the rear yards, or consider installing fences and gates along the sides of the end units to give residents more privacy and security. The planning bureau staff recommends the request be approved with the following reasons. The project is in conformance with the city's comprehensive plan and has been designed to minimize the amount of zoning relief necessary. Approval of the project, of the proposal will enhance the character of the neighborhood and improve the streetscape by developing prominent and long-standing vacant lots, installing street trees, constructing compatible infill development, and adding to the neighborhood's housing inventory. And the proposed project will contribute to the city's need for affordable housing by providing four new affordable housing units in four-bedroom configurations, which will be certified and maintained long-term as affordable units. The proposed configurations represent a size of unit that is in higher demand throughout the city. And finally, the project will enhance one of the primary corridors in the Allison Hill neighborhood, adding new residents to the neighborhood, activating the street and community on nights and weekends, and growing the customer base to support local businesses.
Are you acceptable of the three conditions?
Yes, I would, I'd just comment on the ADA accessibility portion. It's one thing, we're just gonna have to evaluate a little further to see what's possible here, because obviously, the alleyways are pretty narrow to get back there, and we are providing landscaping in accordance with the zoning ordinance on that, I believe. And so, and then the front is sort of meant to be in line with what the, you know, elevations would be consistent with the, that side of the street and the neighborhood. So, it's something we'll have to discuss a little bit further, maybe back and forth with Jeffrey here, but that's the only one that I wanted to just make a, kind of a quick comment on.
So you'll be working with Jeff on that?
Yeah.
Again, I would say that, that, that condition is, again, more of a recommendation. I don't know that we have a requirement for ADA access, and, and to the applicant's point, you probably can't get around and behind to have like rear access, and they are trying to match the existing architecture of the, of the properties on the block. I didn't know if there's a way to, you know, maybe replace one of those steps with a short ramp, or if there's ways to have maybe a, you know, a ramp you can move in and stall to get in and out, or something like that. But, you know, again, it was more of a condition to, again, try and enhance conformance with our comprehensive plan, which, you know, generally recommends to make as many of our housing units as ADA accessible as possible.
With that, I'll go to the public again. Anyone in the middle who's for or against this project? If not, I'll come back to the commissioners, and this is really straightforward, and I'll start with, I'm gonna motion, I'm gonna motion for approval.
Yeah, I think we're there already.
Yeah.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Move conditions.
Second.
It's been moved in a second with the three conditions. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? An abstention, one. Motion carried. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Jeff, would it have made, would it possibly have been easier to put that on to the special exception for this, or on to the special exception, your conditions?
Uh, yeah, I mean...
Rather than the land development. I'm, I'm just saying, I know you're thinking of one project, but in terms of being able to have more teeth to it.
Right, yeah. You know, I, I struggle with that sometimes, because it's like, do you just put all the conditions on one and, and tie them together, or do you split them up?
Yeah, yeah.
Or, how do you do it? And frankly, I actually think it probably makes maybe more sense to have recommendations with a zoning relief that address maybe aspects of the zoning code, like signage or something, and then have aspects of land development plan that deal with the more physical...
Where we can do a little more negotiating in return for the exception versus land development, your kind of...
Correct, yeah.
Recommendations. That's all. Not a major...
Okay, this is item number six. I think it is. This is a special application for nineteen oh nine North Front Street, which is zone Riverfront. It's filed by David Butcher with WCI Partners LP, and it's to convert the existing office building into a multi-dwelling use in the Riverfront District.
Yes, so the applicant is proposing to construct a sixty-unit multi-family dwelling use with associated site and access improvements. The proposal requires the HB approval of a special exception for the proposed use for section seven dash three oh five point seven of the zoning code. Property at nineteen oh nine North Front Street is a one-point-zero-one-acre lot featuring a four-story fifty-eight thousand eight-hundred-and-thirty-two-square-foot structure, which was constructed in nineteen eighty-three. Property is bounded by Delaware Street to the north, a narrow public right-of-way to the east, Minnick Street to the south, and North Front Street to the west. This detached structure features elements of vernacular mid-century architectural style. Character-defining features include the brick foundation with concrete facade on the upper floors, the main entrance into a glass-enclosed atrium, the modern Oriole window projections on all four elevations, the consistent fenestration pattern, and the prominent cornice on the western elevation. The main entrance features a unique entrance vestibule clad entirely in glass with a full-view sliding glass door projecting from a four-story atrium. There are secondary entrances around the building, most of which are simple solid-metal access doors, although there is a full-view metal door flanked by a wide-side light on the side elevation, which is accessed by a simple concrete stoop. Fenestration also includes consistent repetition of five plate-glass windows up the facade extensions located around the building. There are additional plate-glass windows interspersed throughout the facades on the northern and southern elevations. The most prominent aspect of the building is the four-story atrium at the main entrance, which is clad on the exterior with floor-to-ceiling windows and is topped with a trapezoidal glass box. Structure is otherwise topped with a flat rubber roof. Although the Front Street corridor is defined by a mix of building sizes, uses, and designs, subject property represents significant deviation and intrusion that contrasts sharply with many of the nearby historic structures, and overall lacks much in the way of architectural identity. As such, the building contributes little to the character of the streetscape and neighborhood. The planning bureau staff recommends the request be approved with the following conditions. The applicant will receive approval of the law consolidation and land development plan submitted concurrently with the zoning relief application, and any departmental recommendations and/or conditions of approval applied to that review. Planning bureau staff recommends the request be approved for the following reasons. By adaptively reusing an office building along the Riverfront corridor through conversion to residential units, the project conforms to the goals, objectives, and action items in the comprehensive plan, and the purpose of the Riverfront zoning district as outlined in section seven dash three oh five point four G of the zoning code. Project site is located in a mixed-use corridor with nearby residential, commercial, and institutional uses, and there are only minor proposed exterior changes to the building and site, and thus, the proposed multifamily dwelling should not have an adverse impact on the neighborhood. Finally, the proposed development will add new residents to the neighborhood to activate the street on nights and weekends, and grow a customer base to support local businesses.
Thank you, Jeff. Could you state your names, address, and relationship to the project?
Sure. Dave Butcher with WCI Partners. Our address is nineteen hundred North Second Street. We are the developer for the project.
Richard Gribble, architect by design consultants, nineteen fifty Market Street Campbell.
I don't have any direct questions so far, but just want to let, let everyone know, if we don't approve this, this is because of the applicant, Dave Butcher. Don't put it in the...
Can you make up the recording?
Yeah, I have to tell you, Dave, good to see you. No, it's, it's a, it looks like a good project here. With that, I have no questions, and I'll go to the commissioners with questions concerned. Commissioner McKissick?
No, I don't think I have any questions. Is the building fully occupied? I don't think I've ever seen it full.
Uh, first three floors are occupied.
The upper floors still voided off, yeah. They never, I don't think it ever filled up, or if it did, that's been a long time ago.
Right.
Yeah, it, you know, it's, it's a bit of an intrusion, but it's there already. And it does have a sense of the bays, which is fortunate, which works well, I think, for the apartments. And I have to say, I like the fact that you have looked at the concept of tenant amenities and storage and things like that, that we don't see in many of these other things coming in. So to be commended on that, so, yep, that's all.
Commissioner Reed?
I have no questions.
Hey, you forgot.
Well, I could have, I left them out. I thought there was another conflict.
I sent the last two out and rolled up my sleeves, ready to go work on Dave. This was initially a nursing home, correct?
That's right.
All right, and nineteen eighty-three has to be one of the newest constructed buildings on Front Street.
Right.
And I was outside, when, how many units are we gonna put in here?
Sixty.
Sixty? All right. My only question is for staff, are we gonna, I guess, change the, the, the street to the immediate north? Are we gonna change the name back to Delaware Street?
Well, I think you're thinking of the one to the south. Minnick Street is called like Hersha Drive or Hersha Street for that stretch between Front and Second Street.
Catholic north.
I, I, I mean, it's, we still refer to it as Minnick Street, not Hersha, so I would guess, you know, whatever supplementary signage is up there probably will be taken down.
Butcher Avenue has a lease ring, too. Uh, yeah, no further questions.
Commissioner Reed?
Still no questions.
Commissioner Moore?
I, I think, you know, working with the building, this is, this is a pretty nice adaptive reuse of the space, like Commissioner McKissick pointed out. It, so, it looks like it's all one-bedroom apartments, is that, okay, so, any inside, just that's what worked for the...
Yeah, that's what, yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, go ahead.
So, yeah, that's what worked with the layout. It's a very rational floor plan because of the way the window bays layout, and then the way the structural columns kind of proceeded from there. And then just from a market standpoint, one bedroom seems to do really well. Two bedrooms just take a little longer and a little harder.
Yeah, I remember you mentioned that, what was that, last month? Two months ago? When you were last in here for a different multifamily conversion, you mentioned that you're just seeing demand for one bedrooms over anything else.
That's right, yep.
And that's what's, that's what's occupying the most, so it's interesting. I, this is just a general comment, has nothing to do with your application, but while we're, we're seeing obviously a lot of applications as of late that are very residential-heavy, and a lot of multifamily conversions across the whole city, which is interesting to me. If there's demand, you know, that's great. I just wonder, at what point do we look at our development plans for the city and say we need to make sure we're also bringing in businesses and commercials, and providing commercial spaces?
Yeah, you know...
You know, where, what's, where's the line?
Right.
You know, it's gonna be...
I think, you know, I think for a lot of these bigger buildings, especially, they represent a development paradigm that is probably going by the wayside. You have these bigger buildings that are purpose-built for like an office or something. And, you know, just with the overall trend towards work from home, and I think, you know, especially from this, with respect to the city, people that are, companies that are, you know, still have campuses or something, want something out in the suburbs with like surface parking that, you know, doesn't quite work in the city here. So, I think it's, it'd be, I think, preferable to maybe use a first floor and have it broken up for like small commercial or something like that. I know a lot of times that I've spoken with some developers about this, it can be difficult, because it can be difficult to find a viable commercial tenant. Everybody's going to need a roof over their head, they need a place to live, they need a, a residential unit, but the needs of businesses can be a little bit harder to project, and so, when I've spoken to some developers about, you know, well, think about a mixed, especially with new construction more so, well, think about a first-floor residential, or, sorry, a first-floor commercial space, you know, they'll just say, we'll look into it, but it's very hard for us to, I think, project what that income stream is going to look like for them as they're financing. I know one of the places this came up was the Mulder Square Apartments, those like fifty units that were spread out across three sites up there, and, you know, that was all new build, and we said, you know, it'd be great if, to have a laundromat or, you know, something there, and they just said, it's really hard for us to find tenants for these spaces, because you have to have somebody with a viable business plan, and it may, that space may, may remain vacant for a year or eighteen months or something like that, and that's very difficult for them to do when they're trying to, again, I think, plan out, you know, their revenue streams and stuff like that. I think it's maybe more, it might actually be more viable in these types of businesses or these types of buildings. But the other thing is, they only have one real entrance to the, to the building, so...
Right.
It'd almost be like, you'd have to go into this mixed space with the residential, you know, the resident, the residents, and then go into these places, and they wouldn't have that direct access to the public outside, and so, I, I think it's, it'd be great if these buildings had originally been constructed with more access points into them, and, you know, they just weren't, and so it's more of a, how do we adapt this floor plan that was, didn't at all, I don't think, think, consider what a residential use for this building would be to a, to whatever its future is. So, yeah, I mean, I, I think it's, it's easier from, I think, a construction standpoint to do it in new construction, but I think the financing makes that more difficult almost. So it's kind of like, these two things are at odds with one another.
Right. From a developer's standpoint, I completely understand that approach, that logic and, and approach. I conversely just think about a city's economic development standpoint, and at what point does the city look at, is it chicken/egg, right? From a developer's standpoint, I completely understand, you would want to have a tenant ready, right, to move into that space. What happens when commercial businesses want to come into the city but don't have a space to occupy? What, you know? But maybe that's not happening right now in the city? Would we like that to happen at some point, you know? And, and what are we doing to, to, to sort of build that foundation or create that enticement, right, to bring commercial businesses in? And again, for this specific property, I completely agree. Like, this is not feasible to have a, a first floor, you know, commercial spaces or things like that. Maybe I should have saved my question for the next applicant, application, but, but, so for this, it doesn't, it, this is more of just a, a general observation, as we're seeing over the last several months, this influx of a lot of multifamily conversions.
Well, and I think for better or worse, we do have like the Sixth and Seventh Street corridors that are largely vacant, so that's new development, and with a new McLean Street Bridge that'll be coming in, that is meant, you know, intended to kind of help traffic flow through that area. You know, there are opportunities, if somebody's coming in to look in for new build, I think probably less so, to your point, if they're wanting to just take it over an office space. But, you know, I think that'd be a good problem to have.
Sure. Yeah, agreed, agreed, that would be. I thought that's it. That's all my ponderings for the night.
Good night. Commissioner Jordan?
Yes. Start off with Jeffrey. I'm gonna want to bounce between this one and the land development, just to cover everything. I guess for starters, where it says that there's no section on a land development plan for the applicant, application to consider compliance with the city comp plan?
Yeah.
Is that something maybe we could change in the future? Because I, I feel like, you know, it would be good for the applicant to, you know, be considering the comp plan in their proposals.
I...
I have a draft template that's in the works, that's been in the works for like nine months of like updating all of our applications. It's been, it's been mostly putting out fires this year, so hopefully as we get toward the end of the year here, we get a bit more time. It is my intention to update all of our applications, like we did with the very special exception one, and include things like that, make a notation if the units are for rental or for sale, things like that. So, yeah, we are, it's definitely on our radar and we will be including it in our updated applications.
Okay, and then the other thing I had was, in the land development plan, I noticed you, you said that there should be, well, they should consider an enclosed dumpster pad if it won't affect the, I guess, pickup for DPW. Is, is, should that have been a condition or is that just more of a general statement?
I'd say it's more of a general statement at this point, because they are, the building already does have a dumpster pad. It's a little bit different than if you're doing new construction or significantly increasing the intensity of what you would develop. They have a dumpster pad out in the back there. It's not enclosed or anything and obviously that's a non-conforming aspect of the site. It would be preferable to have that there, I think, maybe just for the tenant's own, you know, benefit, so they're not just like having to see that and maybe they're able to enclose it to kind of keep that visibility down.
Gotcha, and the only other thing I have is for you gentlemen, I was looking over the plans, am I overlooking the laundry facilities?
Each unit would have a laundry closet. It's hard to see on your plans though, so you're not overlooking, it's just our drawings are small.
Okay.
But it's a, it's a closet that.
It's like a stackable?
Stackable, yep. Yeah, it's, it doesn't call it out on your drawing, so there you go. But it is there.
All right.
And I, I do, with respect to the dumpster pad, we do want to screen that, but for the reasons Jeff.
Yeah.
Just the aesthetics of it.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yeah.
Good questions. Commissioner Vincent.
Yeah, no, no questions for the applicant, I think that's good. This might be along the same lines that was just asked, but are, do we, are we proactively thinking about how we're tracking projects that are achieving these objectives so that we have some type of reporting that maybe we can even provide to city council, you know, once a year?
Yeah.
And this many projects have were approved due to adaptive reuse. That way, when we do hit, like, hey, this many, we have this many housing units, this is our goal, we should, we now need to look at balancing somewhere else.
Yeah, I actually do have a, an Excel spreadsheet that I reference as I'm going through the reviews of the land development plans that has each goal, objective and action on it, and it has columns beside it, you know, from like twenty-twenty, you know, out to like twenty-thirty-five or something, where it was my goal to try and populate that, to make sure that we're doing it. And maybe it's sparsely populated, maybe it's well-populated, you know, that we're not getting a lot of projects of something or we're not doing something, or maybe we're doing a lot of something. So I have that template down, it's just, you know, getting in and, and filling that out. And it might not be, just be my department, it might be public safety, it might be the city arborist, it might be other departments. So have the, have the template down, it's just a, a matter of like.
Staffing constraints, time restraints?
Yep, yep. So, but, yeah, again, that's, that's one of the big things on my radar here toward the end of the year, to take advantage of that, the month off in December, to start going back and revisiting them.
Did you, but you were leaning forward, did you have a question? Okay. Okay, we'll go to the public, the last two people are still here. If you have any concerns or questions with this project, please stand and state your name. Now, commissioners, appears to be a good project and like you said, like everybody said, this will probably fill the, that building. It'll be useful, because people need places to stay now, so with that, could I get a motion?
Now, this is a special exception we're doing first?
Uh, this is just a special exception, yeah.
I make a motion to approve with the condition as noted.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Boone and Second, for approval of this project with the one condition, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
It's so easy when you bring in a parking.
Yeah, really.
Yeah, I know, right?
Yeah, makes it a lot easier. Okay, oh, motion carried, sorry about that. And now we'll go to the next one, which is the land development plan. Jeff, we can.
Yeah, so the applicant is just proposing to convert the existing office building into a multifamily building with sixty units. The planning bureau staff recommends the request be approved with the following conditions. The applicant should remove the middle curb-cut driveway on Dominique Street and replace it with curbing sidewalk and landscaping to remove an unnecessary pedestrian vehicular access point. It looks like that at one point was a loading dock, or I'm guessing you'd have trucks back up to that, which I imagine would not be necessary under the proposed reuse. And then the bureau also recommends installing a direct pedestrian connection from the building entrance to the Front Street sidewalk, which is differentiated through physical features such as brick stamped concrete or raised walkway through the parking lot. And then that would, you know, better connect, better connect the, the building to the Front Street and to Riverfront Park so that anybody walking through or visiting the property would not have to walk through the vehicular driveway access points, which is, you know, an issue we brought up before in the past, having dedicated pedestrian access points. The planning bureau recommends the applicant replace the tenant's storage closet closest to the main elevator with a bike storage room for residents or their guests who do not drive. Due to the building's footprint within the AE floodplain, a hundred-year floodplain, any investment into the building or, or new installations on the property will require conformance with the city's floodplain ordinance and the applicant should continue coordination with the floodplain administrator regarding the application of these regulations to the subject property. We've already been in conversation with the applicant regarding the configuration of the building and its relationship to the hundred-year floodplain. It's generally built out of the floodplain, but there is a small mechanical room that is below the base flood elevation, which we need to confirm exactly with FEMA, what that does to the, to the property and, and what requirements it imposes on them. So that's pretty much the only real, I think, snag with respect to the building itself. And then finally, any proposed exterior alterations to the building or site must be coordinated with the city's historic preservation specialist and if necessary, must receive hard approval of a certificate of appropriateness application. Planning bureau staff recommends the request be approved with the following reasons. The adaptive reuse of vacant and underutilized office spaces into apartment buildings is a long-term trend within the city and the project presents a reasonable proposal to offset the loss of a commercial tenant and meet the increasing demand for housing through the provision of new units. The project site is located along the mixed-use Riverfront, or the mixed-use Front Street corridor and other conversions of former office buildings have demonstrated the proposed use does not adversely impact the character of the neighborhood and the project will address the primary concern of such conversions through the provision of sufficient off-street parking to meet the demand from new tenants and their guests. And finally, the proposed reuse will add residence to the neighborhood to activate the street on nights and weekends and grow a customer base to support local businesses and will provide additional units to the downtown housing, midtown housing inventory.
Dave, you're acceptable with those conditions?
Yes.
Okay, with that, straightforward, could we get a motion?
Motion to approve with exception.
Is there a second? Just the second for approval of the project with the three conditions, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstention, motion carried. Good luck, Dave.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Item number eight, this is a land development plan for three thirty-three Market Street. It's owned downtown center, it's filed by Brad Jones with Harris Town Development, Development Corporation. It's to convert the vacant office space on floors eleven through nineteen into eighty-one residential units with one and two-bedroom configurations.
Yep, so the applicant proposes to convert vacant office space on floors eleven through nineteen into eighty-one residential units with one and two-bedroom configurations. The project inclu, uh, the units range in size from eight-hundred-and-twenty-eight square feet to twelve-hundred-and-twenty-five square feet. The property at three thirty-three Market Street is a point-eight acre lot featuring a twenty-two-story, two-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifteen-square-foot structure, which was constructed in nineteen seventy-nine. The property is bounded by Market Street to the north, the properties at three thirty-five Market Street and three unaddressed parcel, unaddressed parcels to the east, Blackberry Street to the south and the property at three twenty-one Market Street to the west. This attached structure features elements of mid-century architectural style. Character-defining features include the expansive two-story entryway on Market Street extending through the block to North Fourth Street and Blackberry Street, which features large support columns and two escalators, the large wraparound storefront stretching from Market Street through the entrance area featuring floor-to-ceiling windows and large blue awnings sheltering the sidewalk, the large balcony on the second story above the retail shops, the concrete panels with vertical decoration comprising the facade, the substantial setback of the upper floors and the consistent fenestration pattern. Although there are various access, access points around the building, the main entrance to the office tower is located on the second floor and not visible from the public right of way. Entrances to the commercial spaces on the first floor are recessed and feature full-view metal doors topped with large transoms and flanked by storefront windows. Fenestration on the lower floors is varied, but the upper floors feature horizontal ribbons of plate glass metal windows. The structure is topped with a flat roof of varying elevations that appears to feature gravel and pavers. The structure is the tallest building in Harrisburg with a massing and fenestration pattern similar to that of other modern buildings downtown, but it does feature unique architectural elements like the large entrance arcade, curved storefront and concrete facade panels. As such, the property contributes minimally to the architectural character of the neighborhood. The planning bureau staff recommends the request be approved with the following conditions. The applicant should install a secured bike corral or bike storage area in the sheltered entryway to accommodate non-automotive trips by residents and their guests as the modal shift for trips to and from the property will likely shift as a result of the conversion from offices to residential units. And the applicant should consider landscaping options to soften the building's exterior and improve the aesthetics such as additional planters, green slash living walls and/or green roofs. The planning bureau staff recommends the request be approved for the following reasons. The project proposes the construction of one- and two-bedroom units in sizes larger than proposed for other similar office to conver, residential conversions in downtown. The adaptive reuse of vacant and underutilized office spaces into apartment buildings is a long-term trend for downtown Harrisburg and necessary to enhance the vitality of the neighborhood and the Market Street corridor. Other conversions of former office buildings in the surrounding neighborhood have demonstrated the proposed use will not adversely impact the character of the neighborhood and the project will help maintain the viability of a large structure endangered by the threat of extended vacancy. And finally, the proposed reuse will add new residents to the neighborhood to activate the street on nights and weekends and grow a customer base to support local businesses and will provide additional units to the downtown housing inventory.
Thank you, Jeff. Could you state your names, addresses and relationship to the project?
Hi, good evening, Brad Jones with the Harris Town Development Corporation at three twenty Market Street in downtown Harrisburg.
Richard Gribble, architect, design consultant, nineteen fifty Market Street, Camp Hill.
Okay. Gentlemen heard the staff report with the two conditions, you're acceptable with those conditions?
Yep.
I have not, I don't have any questions, I think it's pretty straightforward here, but we'll go to the commissioners with their concerns or questions. Commissioner McKissick.
I don't have specific questions, I, I think the structural bay gives you opportunities for a little bit larger units than what we are seeing in some other projects at like eleven-hundred square feet, if my eyes aren't going too bad here, which is nice. I mean, we don't have that in the mix here, so. Now, your parking, well, that'd be, three thirty-three garage is more than adequate to support any need that's in here, even though I don't believe parking is required in that zoning district, but.
Yeah, there's almost eleven-hundred parking spaces in that garage, of which it is lightly occupied.
Anymore, yeah.
Yes.
I remember when that was fired up and running.
It's full.
Yeah.
Yep, overfull.
Man, what happens to the escalator, I missed, I've stepped out.
What happens to the escalator?
Yeah.
Uh, the escalator was replaced about five years ago, so it's relatively new and in good working order.
I remember that was the always treat, was would it work or wouldn't it work when we went to the building for twenty-five years?
Well, it's because it's outside.
Yeah.
But it feels like it's inside, right? It's kind of an odd architectural feature, but it does kind of grind up some gravel in there.
Nothing else, thank you.
Commissioner O'Callaghan.
Yeah, does the redevelopment authority currently own the building?
That is correct. We are, we have a, an option to acquire, which we are, are working with the redevelopment authority to acquire the building and that will occur between now and the end of the year.
All right, and kind of following up on Commissioner Merrick's previous comments. Yeah, for the last four or five years, we've been bringing, I mean, converting a, a lot of old office buildings and, into residential. And yet, if you walk up Second Street right now, you, you won't find six or seven people in any of the restaurants. Have you, have you guys done any like market research to, I've been led to believe it's like a, a Gen Z millennial issue, that they just don't. No, seriously. They sit at home and get Uber Eats and watch porn instead on the computer instead of trying to meet girls, I mean, no, seriously.
So, so, I mean, the good news is, and I, I think this is really good news, is that there's a lot of conversions coming through here, because we have a lot, we have a million square feet of vacant office space in the downtown. At least a million, might be conservative. I mean, I have a little chart that I, you know, keep, these are all dots on the map in the downtown, the projects that need to be done, converted probably to residential, maybe mixed use, right? So, I mean, it's a big list and your question about, you know, we need more people, right? We need some more, more people, period. And, you know, with these buildings mostly vacant or completely vacant, like three thirty-three Market, you're going to need to, you're, you're going to slowly build up a critical mass of residents in the downtown. It is going to take time and, and, you know, the office workers are better and busier, more visibly seen customers during the day than the residents are. I mean, I've just noticed that in my, you know, as we look at our own buildings that we've converted, you know, they're just not as active, and it may be that people are staying inside more, but I think it's going to take time to build that capacity to, and, but, but I think it, you're going to see in the next, I think, three to five years, that gradually, these buildings, as they fill up, you're going to see more small businesses that will thrive off of their, you know, customer base.
Yeah, I just thought by now, at least we'd see like a, a little bit of retail, like a bodega at least, but in, you know, just in the one-hundred block of Pine Street, I mean.
Yeah, we're getting crushed on retail. I mean, we've lost, you know, we lost the liquor store through the lack of foot traffic. You know, we lost Rite Aid through bankruptcy, but it would probably close due to lack of foot traffic. You know, we're, it's going to be a little bumpy for a while, but we're, we're, these are going to really help, but it's going to take time.
One thing it does beg the question, what happens on the floors below at this point? What's your thought process for those? Do you have?
On the floors below at three thirty-three?
Yeah.
Uh, well, we have, you know, we, I think the liquor store is a, a very viable retail space, so.
But you're starting at the eleventh floor, right, isn't what it is?
Yes, this is, so we're going to.
So if we look at three or four through eleven, are you reserving those for?
We're going to reserve those for office.
I, I was going to be.
Yes, so it would be, this would be a pretty unusual stack. You know, you have basically half the building in office and half in, you know, it's a strange building, you got street level, which is where the retail is. And we, you know, we have the city's largest retailer right now, which is DTLR. There isn't much retail left, but that is the largest retailer, probably in, in the downtown, I'll say. And then, you know, we have another good shell with Liquor Store, which I think will be, is a viable alternative, especially if we fill the building. I mean, the building had, you know, held three thousand people and there's fifty people that are coming to work there today.
Yeah, if that.
Right?
How, do I offer a question for you, and maybe I should know this answer, but I don't, and I should. Relative to the issues that we have dealt with, with parking, because this is a change of use, are we clean and clear of anything to do with S plus P and FEDFA and everybody else relative to using those spaces?
So I, I don't know how that necessarily works, again, because.
Are they going to come sweeping in and throw?
So I, I called, I called the asset manager today to ask that question and we're good. So, you know, there's plenty of spaces for this use, right? And of course, at the rate that the city, you know, the SP is charging.
If you read the agreement, there, until they are adequately full.
Yeah.
In their minds, whatever that means.
Yeah.
Supposedly, we're supposed to look at disdain on any other uses or transitions.
They'd be thrilled if, if, if we went to them and said, can we have, you know, eighty to a hundred spaces, right? Now, the other piece, I mean, there is a residential program for, you know, residents can get a discounted rate, but it's, you know, it's got some.
It's got some goofy things.
It's got some goofy things with those five incidentals a month, you can't move your car between nine and four, you know, which is kind of crazy, right? So there's. So, there's.
That's kind of a sleeves-out-of-the-vest offer. It looks good, but when you really look at it, it ain't.
That's a good one, yes.
But you're in a unique position. You have the parking as long as they don't raise a, a situation.
Yeah, that's right.
I figured you were on top of that already.
Well, it's, yeah, it's an important one, right? Yeah, very important.
Vern, if I could respond to your question about the offices, the, um.
Yeah.
There, there's two separate elevator shaftways to those, so.
I assumed that you would shut down one bank.
Those upper floors are on their own, uh, elevators.
Yes, yeah, there's, there's eleven elevators in the building. There's a high bank, I mean, they're built, it was built almost like the World Trade Center, right? It's got like a high bank of elevators and a low bank, and then a freight elevator.
So, you can keep the, the office.
You know, separated by that, by that saying.
Yeah, and if you're looking.
When you, when you start looking at the cost of rebuilding those elevators to current, I'm sure they haven't been well-maintained.
Yeah, we, we are underway with a full elevator modernization. Those are original nineteen seventy-nine elevators. Uh, all eleven need to be re-modernized.
Yeah.
It's probably a ten million dollar project.
I would say all a half million per, you know.
Yeah, so we're starting on the low bank, and we're gonna work our way up to high bank.
The other thing about this building, I, I think that maybe Jeffrey mentioned is that the windows are, uh, very unique in this, in this building, where you have a, you have a, a vertical piece that then turns into a horizontal piece, and obviously, we're not changing any of that, but, um, that's kind of a unique feature that, you know, I haven't always seen on.
Yeah, you can look down through the window, right? I mean, through, through the glass on the bottom, which is like the, the sill. It's very strange.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and both this project and the previous project have, they both have killer views. I mean, the views across the river, or the views across the whole entire city from the top floor.
The views are stunning from almost every floor above, above ten.
It, it's, it's almost like, you know, it's a waste that these spaces are sitting there empty, right? So, I, I mean, you have all this beautiful, you know, the, the, the views are amazing, and it's just.
I'm just feeling so old because I watched him build it.
You're not that old. That was when Jimmy Carter was president, way back.
We'd stay down at the old, what's Crown Plaza. We'd come to town and look out the back window and watch the steel coming up. Back then, when you're a young kid, you wanna be an architect? That was the coolest thing you ever saw, when I came from county with the tallest building was four stories.
I didn't know where we were, like.
It's my turn.
Your turn.
Commissioner Reed.
Along the same lines of some of the earlier comments, HDC has done a lot of conversions downtown. Uh, what's your current occupancy rate?
Uh, we're running about ninety-five percent.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, there's, the residential market is, is pretty hot still here. We have a few stubborn vacancies here and there, but, but for the most part, the good news is, people wanna live in the city.
Yeah.
It's great, right? I mean, so, uh, I hope it continues, because, um, it's kind of the one sector that we really needed to continue to work.
Okay, great.
And I think it will.
Good, okay, that was it for me.
Commissioner, Commissioner Merrick.
I have one very important question. Do the tenants get to use the escalators?
The, yeah, sure, of course they do, you bet.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
I'm sold. Yeah, I know.
We're in the middle.
I didn't, I, I would, I didn't know if, because, right, like you said, those escalators, like, they start outside, they kind of take you into like that middle open floor, and I didn't know if those were exclusive to the office. I should come over for a tour.
Yeah, come on over, yeah.
I didn't know if they were exclusive to the office spaces over there.
You, you have to get the escalator to get to that.
To get to lobby.
And then get in the elevator.
It's street, then lobby, and one through nineteen.
Okay.
Very strange numbering system.
Yeah, yeah, so they get to use the escalators. No, I, I, I mean, I think, yeah, it, it's great that you're filling in these spaces, and, you know, given the location too, right? I mean, you have Harrisburg University and, and other business, that influx, right? It makes a lot of sense. Are you, does Harrisburg University provide student housing? Are you working with them to sort of help students have housing accommodations?
Uh, we are, yes.
With this?
Um, we have some, they're leasing some of our housing for their students, and then they have some, uh, students at Pennsylvania Place, and then at three three-five, the old Governor Hotel right next to three thirty-three.
Yeah, okay, yeah. That was it.
At least we know where to finally end now. Commissioner Jordan.
Yes, um, the only question I had was the entrance on Fourth Street, it said it's being reconstructed as a switchback design. Is that gonna be ramp or stairs?
It's a stair, yes. It's a new stair. Uh, the old stair was, you know, needed to be reconstructed, and, and we designed a new stair that makes, so that you can see the stair from, from the Market Street side. The old stair was kind of oddly designed and, and falling apart, so we're in the middle of about a three million dollar facelift for the stair and the upper walkway and the facade of that lower floors.
So, if somebody had like a mobility device, how would they access the building?
So, the, um, there's an ADA, um, elevator off the back, and that would be how they would get in.
All right, cool, thank you.
Could I also add to, um, you know, if you're in the parking garage, right? So, from the parking garage, you could come right into an elevator lobby. So, if you drove, drove in, you're even up to that second walkway level, once you would come out of your car, you're right at an elevator lobby that could then get you upstairs, or could get you into that lobby level that could take you to the offices or to apartments.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Vinton.
No questions, but just like everyone else, I, I was just walking by this property maybe a few weeks ago, and, you know, I know within the application, you know, you, you mentioned that the liquor, or the wine and liquor store closed, and I'm always wondering, I was just wondering what we were doing with that space, so.
Yeah.
Great, you agree with spring purpose?
Yep, you know anybody, send them our way.
All right.
Yes. I think it's a great space.
My only question is, is that, um, is it WPTV or one of those stations, are they still located?
Yes, sir, yep, just renewed their lease.
Yeah, they're building their space over in Keystone Building.
Yeah, they've been there since, like, nineteen eighty.
Yeah. Okay, with that, since there's only one person in public, you, you foreguise this project.
Just can't find anything better to do on a Wednesday night.
I mean, it's pretty bad to be here.
You, you got him out of his apartment, right? There we go.
Okay, with that, as we know, this is pretty straightforward, could I get a motion?
Motion to approve with conditions.
No second.
And it's the move to second to approve this with the four conditions. All those are favor stated by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, upstaged, most of you carry.
Thank you very much.
Great job.
Have a great night.
Thanks, Barry. With that, um, under old business, I had Jeff to put on this. Sean, Sean, please, not over. I, we're under old business, and since you were there, do you have anything to report?
Well, yeah, we all solved that last night.
It, it was, it was a good event, um, and as Vern pointed out, Phil, and, you know, he's been, been on this, been doing this for years, this is the first time, as we, as everybody else, or any of us, has been doing this. I'm not sure what's gonna come of it, or what the purpose of it, uh, went into it, I don't know what the purpose was. I, I, I would hope that one of the purposes, one of the results is that some of these boards and committees, you know, get filled up, because it seems like a lot of them are operating, you know, barely.
A quorum.
Right.
If, for the parking, we could use at least another person.
Oh, yeah, no, I was, I was talking, I was fascinated by it. I, I'm, pardon me if I have time, and I had, trying to revive that student's work. Yeah, Tucker was actually on the show that I used to do, I mean, a few times.
Was I?
Yeah, you remember the conference plan, you mean, where it was?
Yeah, 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 that's right, that's right.
And they would, basically, you would watch it, you'd come, you'd win through every single chapter of the conference plan. We're big now, but I think we'll run through that for all the review boards, whatever. There's stuff that I know, I know people are not aware of, but that information session is very good. If we want something on the faculty, the office, the faculty.
I, I would also add that, um, at least from what City Council said, it sounded like it was about, um, kind of like doing a public education service. Um, so, you know, all the boards and commissions and authorities and what have you reported out, and then the City Council would kind of like summarize, um, what they said, and then I think, um, like Sean was saying, um, you know, it's kind of like a call to action to get some of these boards filled, because quite frankly, we were one of the few boards that had a full complement.
Yeah, you, yeah, you guys are fine, but like our hard board, like, we're struggling to put together a quorum. Um, zoning hearing board, I mean, a few years ago, we had an alternate, and now we just have two, and, you know, occasionally, they've had to have ones where they've had a special master, which is when you just have the one person, either because one of the other, uh, board members has had to recuse themselves, or they just weren't able to make the meeting, so you're having one person decide your, you know, case, which, you know, could be a little, maybe dicey for some of the applicants.
Raised is a legal challenge, yeah.
Yeah, what I could say is, um, are they able to modify the, the quantity? Because I think the zoning board had the fewest amount of members.
Mm-hmm. Right, right.
Yeah, yeah, at least five, absolutely.
I think that's statutory, isn't it, though, the construct?
It, yeah.
Quasi-judicial, so it's kind of a strange.
Uh, yeah, I wanna say that one is regulated more so than like our hard board, because, yeah, they're quasi-judicial, so they're certain.
The one thing that did come up last night, uh, and was the continual reference to the annual reports that are written to all of the commission. I was hoping you could give us copies of the last ten.
Uh, yeah, here they are.
Yeah, um, but I think that's something, though, that, um, if it was even nothing more than a newsletter to council, to let them know, and I think you already talked about what eighty percent of that would consist of with your spreadsheets and some other things, but that's what jumped out at me, is that there's just been no communication back to them.
That's what I would really strongly recommend, is that we find a way to create more living things that are public-facing, right? Like, so, if you have a spreadsheet, then that can get turned into graphs, and that can be plopped on a website, and, you know, quick infographic-type things are a lot easier to digest than.
And I really like trying to bring a qualitative aspect, or sorry, quantitative aspect to what we do, because a lot of it's qualitative, and you can listen to meetings, read reports, but it's like, okay, well, what does this mean at the end of twelve months? You know, like, how many units? And, and that's another thing I'm working on, the council asked for, I think, last year, was basically like, well, what are our timeframes to when a application comes in, to when it gets to us, to when it gets reported, to when a building's done? Um, and so I've gotta go back through all of our records and look at every, you know, single land development plan. I'm just starting with my tenure here, but, uh, go through every land development plan, make sure you've got like a building permit that you can reference for a date and stuff like that, and then see the recordation date. That's, that's a pretty, uh, that's a pretty time-intensive task, but it will give us that information of like, okay, it takes us two years to get from handing in an application to the Planning Bureau to getting a certificate of occupancy for your project. And that, and I mean, even something like that little nugget of information can be really helpful, because I, some of the, I, I think you've probably heard some of the other developers that come in here will say like, you know, yeah, it takes me three years just to get, you know, my entitlements in Philadelphia or something like that. I think that's something that we could really, at, at least in my experience, we work a lot faster.
If it's a positive thing, which I think it is.
Which I think it is, exactly.
It's an aspect for, for advertising.
Yeah, like, it's, like, this is not as hard as people might think it is.
Take that long process and Schoolhouse Rocket.
That's right.
Yeah, a, a lot of which you said, Jeffrey, I mean, that could be an executive summary for council.
Right, right, but I mean, it's, it's the, it's the getting the data.
Well, it's getting the data and doing the work. That's a lot, it's a lot of hours.
Crunching and everything like that.
That's a lot of processing.
And, and honestly, like, sometimes it'll happen an hour at a time. Like, I'll just be in here on a weekend and, you know, finish up doing some other reviews, and I'll just say, well, I'm here, might as well, you know, knock out five of these land development plans and get all their dates like locked in, and, you know, that, I didn't finish anything really, but I got a little ways towards the end, and, you know, eventually, you hopefully get to the end, and you have something, you know, to show for that, and something that you can, uh, present to people in a way that they can, um, you know, understand. So, whether, you know, as far as like timeframes, like, two months, two years, whatever, and instead of just like, I don't know, things seem like they take a long time, so.
Well, I think it's guilt by association, because we've got a big building sitting on a hill downtown.
Right.
And everybody thinks, oh, it's Harrisburg, it's no budget, it's Harrisburg, it's no legislation, it's whatever it takes to get through, like, you know, through the House and Senate, and, and it isn't.
Yeah.
I mean, you're, you're much quicker than that.
Yeah.
It, it was, it was as is regular, so, actually, I was trying to watch all of it. It ended up, because City Council was a beast one, because they went over the budget for, um,
the reallocation for the, for the Broad Street Market, so that, so like, if you went,
if you were watching City Council as normal, it was four hour, four and a half hours, I think.
Yeah.
By the time it was said and done, so like, that, and that, that's what makes me nervous, like, to reach out to the public, right? Yes, it's a public-facing meeting. No one's gonna, no one's gonna watch four and a half hours.
Exactly, yeah.
Even, even these meetings, like, you know, these are out there, I think, I think we only have like one or two people that turn in and actually might, uh, might queue as one of our tax enforcement officer. It will, he'll like say to me the day after, just be like, oh, I watched some of that meeting last. I was like, really?
Yeah, but, yeah, I guess you're gonna think about it, we could probably get more public participation than any of the other ones.
But I mean, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a lot to ask from people. You're there at the end of the day after everybody's worked, and if you've got, you know, kids, or you're making dinner or something, you're just like, I don't have time to go downtown, and I don't know how long this meeting's gonna take, when I'm gonna get to stand up and say something, you know? It can be, uh, it can certainly be, uh, just like, the participation aspect can be daunting.
Well, we did have two people, right, last night to speak? Two citizens, I guess.
Yeah, it was definitely at least two.
The last fellow was kind of interesting.
Oh, yeah.
He should watch it just for that.
Who was that?
I can't remember his name.
Fortunately, he.
He lives around the corner from me, I know him.
Yes, he's complaining about the, 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 the new bumps on Division Street, which I'm going a hundred percent behind him, but he, he's, he's complaining that he's a bike rider. I'm not complaining he's a car rider.
I, I, if it's, if that's who I think it is, yeah, I live right around the corner from him.
Yeah, so, yeah.
He was colorful.
It was public participation, and thank God, we, we were unscathed. None of them, uh, none of them forced anyone or had any problem with us.
Well, trust me, trust me, this, we're, we're, we're not the problem.
There weren't, a couple more we're having to be developing.
We, we, in the past, we used to have a lot of critics.
Really?
Oh, yeah. We had one that, remember the one girl used to come down here?
Oh, yeah, I remember her. She didn't like me very much.
Interesting.
Yeah, she always. I said, what did you do to her? But somehow, this committed commission, as long as I've been on it, and Vern, we always had a full commission, you know, even though we all have other things to do. But, I don't know, this has been.
Well, kudos to all you for staying on, you know, past your term, and that's also part of it.
Was that a point of conversation?
Yeah, I was afraid to, to explain it to him, because I figured, you have.
Like, were they sort of like, what?
No, they, they, by the time I got up there, they, I think they realized that most of the committees were that way.
Okay.
What do you mean, like, operating on expire?
So, I mean, I, I.
I was gonna say, the solicitor was, um, Neil was pretty, he explained it out pretty much, that, you know, everything you guys pretty much said, that, you know, it's really hard to find people who have that time to volunteer consistently, so, once you find somebody, you keep them.
Yeah.
Well, Vern said there was one committee that they didn't, we, one that didn't know who the.